Evening and welcome to the Planning Board on September 26th, 2024. This meeting will be broadcast live and recorded by Foxborough Cable Access. There may be people zooming in to ask questions as well. Okay, that being said, let's open the meeting. Do we have any old or new business to address?
Sure, there are a couple of items that you should be aware of. Under departmental business, the number one probably priority that you should be aware of is that Jane Pierce did officially retire from her position as conservation agent. So we have, the position has been posted. We've received several applications to date. So we will have a new conservation agent, hopefully within the next couple of months. Permanize implementation continues. We can begin referring Planning Board applicants through the portal. We're probably going to start by just recommending it to our more experienced applicants and their agents so that we can get some good troubleshooting before we open it to everybody. Under MBTA Communities, we have one more meeting left to go. At that meeting, I'll post all of the final materials and all of my final research regarding impact analysis and, you know, building models. You're going to see a lot of that information in the packet that I gave you today. But I'll finalize it. I'll get the residual information I need from other departments. And we will decide at that next meeting on the district options to include at town meeting. I'm going to do a poll in advance so that people can contribute online as well, so that as many voices are heard as possible.
Great idea.
Master plan, we've completed scoring aside from references. I'm calling those now, and we'll try to make a decision within the next week on the consultant that will help us with the master plan process. Nothing really is new under economic development nor under opportunities. A lot of really pending long frame projects. So that's about it.
Do we have a date for the beginning of the demolition?
It has begun. Their permit was issued, I think, September 9th for the demolition to begin. And for those who are unfamiliar with the question, it's the Naponton Avenue campus for the former Foxborough Company buildings up there.
Okay, anything on active subdivisions?
Subdivision construction is continuing on Rich Road. They're progressing very nicely. And Lawson Farm, they're working on the curbing along Phase One and Phase Two. I did receive today a letter from one of the residents has some concerns, so I'm going to share that with the developer and his representatives and our DPW department that has been observing all the construction. So we'll see what, how we can help.
About the road?
About the conditions that, you know, that are left after the construction of the curbing. So, you know, they had to, you know, make some messes on some of the landscaping. So people are upset. So we'll see what, how they can remediate that.
Okay. Could you just clarify for me? I was not quite sure. Had they started to lay, had they already laid the curbing for that island?
The board waived.
No, I remember that.
Yes.
And I remember that it was decided that that was not going to be built.
Yes.
But I didn't know whether they had already installed any of the curbing.
No, no, because we had talked about that island not being placed until after Phase Three was well underway because of the construction vehicles would have been, you know, their travel would have been hampered by the island. So it had not even started. It hadn't been laid out at all.
Action items?
Yep, we can do action items. Do we have our action items, Gabby?
Yeah, we have an A&amp;R plan in front of you from the Craft Group. You guys want to?
You'll have to walk us through this.
I'm sorry?
You'll have to walk us through this.
No, not a problem, sure. Sorry. So Beth Worling, Planning and Project Management with the Craft Group. I'm here representing FXP LLC, who's the owner, I mean, the applicant, sorry. The purpose of the plan is to divide the property located at 182 Summer Street in Walpole in Foxborough into two lots. Lot A is located entirely in Walpole, which will be retained by the current owner, and Lot B, located entirely within Foxborough, and pending endorsement, will be purchased by FXP LLC.
Can we ask what the intent is for the lot?
Sure. So right now, the intent is to simply subdivide the property, and we haven't really determined at this point in time what the future use will be.
Okay. And the existing dwelling on the property will remain for now or?
In Walpole.
Yep.
Yep.
And the Walpole Planning Board has signed their portion of the plan, you know, because the lots straddle both towns. Both planning boards have to sign off on it, and Walpole took the first step.
Okay. Do we have any other questions from the board?
No.
Do we have a motion?
Yep, I make a motion to approve the A&amp;R subdivision plan at 182 Summer Street, Walpole and Foxborough.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's only 26. Sorry. Do you want me to fix it? No, she looked. Sorry. I should have looked at my phone. There you go. Thank you. Yep. Or I could have just looked right there. You want to do the minutes or you want to do the?
No, the Elm Street. Elm Street, the gentleman should be on Zoom.
Oh.
Oh, okay.
The 63 Elm Street.
That request for landscaping modification. He was there. We cannot hear you. You're on mute.
Can folks hear me?
Yes. Yes.
So my name is Joshua Lee Smith. I'm outside counsel for National Grid. We, I noticed on the agenda, I believe our item is at 7:20. Are you still, are we still able to go before that time?
No, you're not at 7:20. 7:20 is the Patriots, the Craft Group.
Oh, okay.
You're an action item. Because you're here for 63 Elm Street?
Exactly.
Yeah, that's an action item. You can go ahead.
Okay, we can go ahead?
Yes.
Excellent. So again, my name is Joshua Lee Smith. I'm outside counsel for National Grid, representing Massachusetts Electric Company in connection with this request. Just as a very brief history, we saw and obtained various relief and approvals, zoning related approvals, from various boards and commissions from the, you know, within Foxborough in connection with this substation project. This goes back to 2022. Since that time, the company has, they commenced work, they completed the work, all of the substation equipment and upgrades that were contemplated have been installed and our substation is energized with respect to that, all that new equipment. The only last outstanding item to complete this project are the plantings, the landscape plantings. So as I submitted to the town, to the planning board, a brief letter indicating that on further review by the engineering team and civil team, as well as the company's landscape architect, based on some of the infrastructure that's there today, as well as some of the new infrastructure that was installed and constructed as part of the project, including some overhead wires and duct banks, some of the plantings that have been approved need to be swapped out. So we submitted a plan that shows, I'm sorry, that shows the proposed new placement. And so should I show my screen with respect to?
Yes, please.
Or cannot be shared? Okay, so I'm going to attempt to share my screen. And as I'm looking, it's, I'm unkind. Oh, share screen. Can the board see this, my screen?
Not yet. It's just, yep.
There it is.
We got it.
Okay. So along the front here, so just to get, you provide some context, Elm Street is here. Hopefully you can see my mouse waving over here.
Yeah, right. It's by 11 Steeplechase. Yep, we're good.
Okay. And then, so this row of plantings here, what had previously been proposed were deciduous plantings. We are proposing instead a row of type of evergreens, in particular these, what's shown here. And I could show you a rendering in just a moment. So we're instead proposing evergreens to be installed here, and then on the left side, which I believe is Westerly, on the Westerly side. Again, what were proposed were mostly a number of shade trees in this area, and this corner over here. So what we're proposing instead are essentially a row of rhododendrons along this Westerly side. And let me show you.
What's the height difference, Josh, between what was going, what's the height difference between what was going to go in there and what you're now asking to put in there?
Good question. So let me start by saying, on that left side, in terms of that overhead wire, it's about, that overhead line is about 30 feet. So the company has clearance requirements, and what was proposed on that left side could grow between 40 to 70 feet, which obviously is, was an oversight by the company. And so that's why we're proposing the rhododendrons over on the side. I will pull up the rendering. And just let me know when you can see this. Can folks see the screen?
Now we can.
Okay. Yeah, so again, along the front here, along Elm Street, what had been proposed were essentially shade trees, which really is, is not a year-round type of species. So instead, what are proposed are these evergreen type arborvitae that provide year-round screen. So we believe it would be better coverage for that, what is most visible, which is along down the street. And by the way, for those who are familiar with the site, directly across the street from the substation site is a bus depot. There are school buses, DPW, I believe, probably, I believe operates the site. But there are school buses that are stored across the street. And to the right and to the left, to the upper left, is a solar field, a large-scale solar photovoltaic site. And then to the right is also a municipal-operated DPW site, essentially, I believe, with a parking lot with compacted ground. So my point being that on, to the right, to the left, there are no residences in any close proximity to this site.
So Josh, so effectively, the reason you can't do what was originally proposed is they would grow too high. Is that correct?
That's correct. That's correct. Although, as I mentioned, on the right side, which I believe is the Easterly side, above the substation, there also were plants that were contemplated, which it was determined that a duct bank is located there. And so we are, there are no plantings that can be accommodated on that side, on the right side. And again, the right side is the adjoining DPW parking lot.
Yep.
Actually, we have a letter here from Scott Shippey, the Building Commissioner, and he has no problems with your request. I honestly don't see a problem with doing arborvitae in that location either.
Neither do I.
No, it's good.
I spoke with, today with the DPW Director and Assistant DPW Director, and they both reviewed the pla, had reviewed the plans and had no concerns. As Josh said, that the, one of the sides is pretty much a storage yard for the DPW, so they're not concerned.
And the improvements they did on the substation there are actually very, very nice, as far better than what it was. So.
You want a motion?
Do we need a motion?
Sure.
I make a motion to approve the request for landscaping modification for 63 Elm Street.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Has anyone had?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Have a good night. Jeff, have you had the chance to review the minutes?
I have.
Is everyone good with the minutes?
Yes, I'm good.
Okay. Make a motion to approve the minutes from September 12th, 2024.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let me make a motion. I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing, special permit, 73 Main Street, construction of an eight-unit multifamily dwelling, Briarwood Construction Corp., until October 10th at? At 7:30 PM?
Yes. Bill Buckey is going to submit revised plans. I was up to 13th, did you hear anything? Well, he's expecting to submit revised plans soon.
Okay. Good?
Okay, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have a vote.
Oh, you want to go sign the A&amp;Rs?
Yes, we can do that.
Yeah, please.
There's just one A&amp;R, right?
Yeah, just that one. The Mylar. I need the pen.
Pens.
We have pens. We have special pens.
Did I say you're slipping? You didn't put them out?
Yeah.
I'm trying to get myself higher.
Was yesterday really that bad?
Modification to site plan approval request.
Yes. Mr. France?
Good evening, Mr. Vice Chair and Board. Dan, Woody and Beth with the Craft Group, Peter with Gulston, our counsel, and Derek with VHBR Engineering Firm. This is really about a stadium site plan modification. This modification is to the original stadium site plan from 2000. It is a continuation of our efforts to modernize the stadium and surrounding properties and just represents another significant investment here in the Foxborough area. We did last week go through a number of the, you know, recent additions, so I don't know that we necessarily need to do that, but things like, you know, kind of following in the same vein, the North End Zone addition, the four-story Craft Group addition, and then multiple gate improvements, football storage, and plaza improvements back from 2019 up through 2021 being the North End Zone. But the purpose for tonight really is to build a new two-story best-in-class football training center. It'll be dedicated home to all of our football operations. It'll include training facilities, team offices, sports medicine, player facilities, press rooms, strength and conditioning. And it's really the same program that's inside the stadium right now, and the idea is to modernize it, bring it out of the stadium, and give them their own standalone practice facility. So that's why we're here tonight. Parking really hasn't been a change in parking at all. It nets out to, no change in parking. All the parking will be at grade. Some of it will be under the building, and Derek will go through that here in a little bit. We'll also walk through some of the site circulation, which has been reviewed by Public Safety, and sees it as an improvement, and we'll walk through some of the landscaping. So right now, we just have some barren parking lots with some curbing, and this will actually add some nice greenery to this side of the site. It has been a very robust review process. August 7th, as we stated, we did a pre-filing with town officials and department heads. Comments from that meeting show up in the plans that we will discuss this evening. On August 29th, we filed. We met with the Planning Board on September 12th, and at that time, it was determined that a public hearing would be appropriate, so that's the reason we're here tonight. We have had a stormwater peer review done. We received comments on September 16th, responded to them on the 26th, and I think we expected any remaining issues can easily be addressed. And then lastly, September 16th, we had a Conservation Commission meeting. We were not able to close that out on that Monday because we had not received our filing number. We have now received that filing number, so we expect to close this coming Monday, the 30th, with the Conservation Commission. While we believe that the project doesn't intensify the use of the stadium or really have any impacts to the neighbors or their uses, we do welcome their comments and look forward to hopefully answering any questions they have. And if they have questions that are unrelated to this project and just about the stadium or the project in general, happy to answer that offline with them as well. And I do know, I think, it sounds like this is the furthest away we get, unfortunately, Gabby, so I guess I can walk through. I think East Cross Street, we want to put in perspective.
Yes. If you're going to talk, just, I know you want to point, but you've got to be by the microphone.
I'm pretty loud, though.
That is true.
You get a thumbs up from back there, so.
Okay, well, so again, this is Cross Insurance Drive, which goes out to North Street right here, and then back here, as you recall, this will take the drive down to back here, which was where the Patriots Training Center was, and that's really, so Cross Street ends up being out here. The closest, and we went through this a couple of weeks ago when we were here, the closest resident that we have is actually on North Street here, and that's over 1,000 feet from where this project is anticipated. And I don't know, does that kind of answer the question? It sets it in a location anyway, that it's.
Gabby, what's your concern?
From Cross.
No, I just, there's residents here from Cross Street that wanted to know, like, how it relates to Cross Street.
Yeah, so this is the drive that goes down behind the stadium to the Patriots Training Center that ends up about right here, and as you guys, as you recall, I hope, that is the facility that's adjacent to Cross. So Cross Street will end up being down here.
The Revolution Training Center.
Correct, yes, I'm sorry. So I think, Derek, if we could maybe just show the next couple of renderings and just, so again, the building is located at the south end of the stadium. Again, a two-story structure, elevated parking, as we talked about right here. And again, it's just a modernization of a facility. It's that puts football all in one place. They'll be able to park and come into the building at this level. Many of the training portions of it are on the first level, so they'll be able to walk right out of the training areas and the weight rooms onto the practice field, the lower practice field, and then the upper practice field is right here beyond. And then most of their meeting rooms end up being on the second floor. And at the end of our deck tonight, we have, we have the floor plans that we can quickly walk you through.
Yeah, excuse me. If you could go back to the beginning?
Yes, sir.
Just for the folks that are here from Cross, and show the current condition without, do you have it without the building in place, so they can get a better feel for what's what?
Right now, that's just a parking lot.
Right, okay, okay. It looks like the building, so.
Yeah, I don't know that we have that, so.
Okay.
And what has happened is this, this field was built for soccer, which is bigger than a football field, so it's larger than it needs to be. So we're actually taking a portion of that field to put the building on so that the building, so you could be able to walk right out of the building onto the field. And because the football field is a little bit narrower than the soccer field, it affords us that ability on that grade to be able to just walk right out. So right here, we have a fence line, and it goes down to this current road that accesses the loading dock, and Derek will show you how that's going to be rerouted. And then this is all a parking lot. And again, most of that has been raised and elevated, so the parking lot is still there. And this is the Cross Insurance Drive that comes off the backside of North Street, to put things in perspective. And it's right beyond that, and this is the wetland, this is the wetland that we've been working through with the Conservation Commission right in this area.
Dan, I think we do have a view from, I know it's not from back in that perspective, but I think we have one from the upper practice fields. That gives some context, just because that's the lower practice field, so that's looking at it from.
We had the luxury of listening to you two weeks ago. I don't know how much these folks really understand what the location was. I just wanted to try to help them understand.
Okay. And yeah, I guess, can we go back to the original, Derek? I'm sorry to play ping pong with you. But just to put some things in perspective, you know, this is our operations building, this is the field house, so it's way over, you know, the Naponton River runs right through over here, and then the helipad is basically right behind this building and the practice field right there. So this is, this is a rendered view of the, kind of the entrance to the building and the look and feel, and then we have a couple from the backside of the building, from the practice field side, if we could show that, Derek. So again, this would be standing on the lower practice field, looking back at the facility. Again, you'll be able to walk right out of the building, right onto the practice field, and up here is where all the meeting rooms are. This area right here is actually two-story space, so the weight room area will be big and open. It'll be two-story, high clear story, so that it feels open and airy.
wanted to try to help them understand.
Okay. And yeah, I guess, can we go back to the original, Derek? I'm sorry to play ping pong with you. But just to put some things in perspective, you know, this, this is our operations building, this is the field house, so it's way over, you know, the Nippon River runs right through over here, and then the helipad is basically right, right behind this building and the practice field right there. So this is, this is a rendered view of the, kind of the entrance to the building and the look and feel, and then we have a couple from the backside of the building from the practice field side, if we could show that, Derek. So again, this would be standing on the lower practice field, looking back at the facility. Again, you'll be able to walk right out of the building, right onto the practice field, and up here is where all the meeting rooms are. This area right here is actually two-story space, so the weight room area will be big and open. It'll be two-story, high, clear story, so that it feels open and airy. And then I think the rest is up to you, Derek, if you could...
Okay.
Walk them through that, and then we, at the tail end, can do some review of the floor plans.
Great. For the record, Derek Maciona, civil engineer with VHB. So just to orient folks here, Lot 6C, that's kind of the proposed building area. Just off the page north is the stadium, the adjacent stadium loading, and then, as Dan was mentioning, lower practice field, which sits about 10 feet higher than the existing Lot 6C. Cross Insurance Drive, we're proposing to maintain the existing alignment of that, and then just east of that is Lot 6B.
So as a reference, it's essentially where the blue painted parking is right there, is pretty much where they're going to locate it.
I'll overlay the proposed site plan right now. So this is a view of our proposed site plan, as Dan mentioned, 155,000 square feet, roughly two stories. And the nice part about this is, the building was really designed to integrate the existing topography, as Dan mentioned, that Level One, as we're calling it, walks directly out to the lower practice field elevation, and then your ground floor, where the parking is underneath the building, is at roughly the same grade as existing Lot 6C. So that allows us to play with the topography and kind of match it almost existing in kind, which would really limit the disruption on the site during construction, and it allows us to maintain, like I said, the access through Cross Insurance Drive, kind of build that up to be a nice streetscape with landscape on either side, and create this really nice arrival sequence as you kind of head north along the east side of the building. As Dan mentioned, the ground floor level, there is parking roughly... Drop to the next slide. So this kind of highlights the different parking uses on the site and kind of building entry points. There's roughly 100 spaces underneath, kind of in the exact location of the existing Lot 6C, that'll be underneath the building at ground level. That'll be mainly dedicated for football personnel, and then we'll have additional overflow parking in kind of the northern portion of Lot 6B. Now, as I was mentioning, with the buildup of the streetscape, we were able to kind of define both the main entrance at the lobby with kind of a raised crosswalk, which will be a nice kind of arrival sequence to the new building. Dedicating some parking on the southern side of Lot 6B with another raised crossing that takes them directly to kind of their back door for facilities and in-loading. And then we have a dedicated media entrance on the north side of the ground level, as you can see, highlighted in orange. That'll be dedicated media parking, and they'll have a direct entry on the north side of that ground level. As Dan mentioned, as we kind of work up the other floors, that Level One, as we're calling it, walks directly out to the lower practice field at the same elevation, and then, as Dan said, Level Three kind of is meeting rooms and football ops space. So just touch on emergency vehicle access. Their primary access is off in North Street, so kind of heading up north along Cross Insurance Drive, they'll be able to tee up at the external loop road intersection, be able to circulate three ways around this building, and then they can head straight up north through Cross Insurance Drive, get to the interior loop road that wraps around the east side of the stadium, and they can circle out through the exterior loop road as well. The building is eight foot four clear, so we did, like Dan said, we did coordinate with fire. We are, that is enough clearance to allow their squad car to maneuver underneath the building inside that parking area as well. From a loading perspective, I'll touch on the stadium loading first. I think one major improvement as part of this project is this relocated loading drive, as Dan mentioned. We had the interior drive that was kind of just east of that lower practice field. Now we're kind of relocating that to create this central drive off the exterior loop road that brings trucks directly into the stadium loading area. And then for the Patriots Training Center, loading is primarily going to be on the south side here, so they'll access that from either direction on the exterior loop road. Trucks can kind of swing and back into that area. And then I just want to touch on some landscape and some stormwater improvements that we're proposing for this project. As Dan mentioned, there is an existing wetland just south of this building. It's tough to see on this image, but there are kind of two areas that have been previously disturbed with pavement and some gravel, so we're proposing to restore those to their natural vegetation, plant some shrubs, transplant a couple of trees on the right side, to, like I said, really build up that streetscape and that arrival sequence as you're kind of turning onto the Cross Insurance Drive and kind of hitting the main lobby for the building. On the right side there, that's existing parking as part of Lot 6B. We're proposing to kind of close that parking lot off and propose a new rain garden with some plantings within that as well. And then from a stormwater perspective, existing Lot 6C, that was pretty much all existing pavement. We're now, since the parking is underneath and then we're putting the building directly on top of that, we're taking all that runoff, capturing that within the closed drainage system, and then directing it to an existing stormwater basin that you can see highlighted with the one there. We're going to reconstruct that basin, ensure it's in compliance with the mass stormwater regs. So from a water quality standpoint, we're taking pavement runoff and capturing that with, technically clean roof runoff, capturing that within the closed drainage system and discharging it to the basin. As I mentioned previously, building up the streetscape with plantings on both sides, which I think is, you know, definitely important and creates that sense of arrival for this new facility. As far as other utilities go, mostly can be serviced off existing utilities just adjacent to the building, so there's no new utilities that we're proposing other than new building connections off the existing surfaces.
Is there any significant change in a previous surface?
A tenth of an acre.
Tenth of an acre?
Yep.
How much parking you sacrificing putting this building in?
Net zero, yep. I think with that, we'll open it up for questions.
Do we have any questions from the board?
And I, just to add, you know, just, and I, again, we did talk about it, but now, just for you to read it for the audience, that the intent here is to start construction on this building this fall and have it operational by April of 2026. Again, as we discussed, that's kind of when FIFA takes care and control of the stadium, so it would be nice to be able to get the football team out kind of on their own island so that they're not having to deal with the distractions, I'll call it, of World Cup, and they can operate independently in their new facility adjacent to their practice fields, but not have to worry about some of the restrictions that will be brought on because of World Cup.
Is that one of the drivers for doing this?
It's, it's, it's a secondary driver. The real driver is just really modernizing the facilities. We've talked about it, you've seen the reports and, you know, on sports radio and on the paper, that our facilities did not get shining grades, and so the intent is to modernize them and to bring them up to the standards that they should be at.
Okay, thank you.
On the visual that you showed of the building itself, that's the one, roof line, you don't have your systems on the roof?
We will have a handful of air handling units on us, on, yes. Very, it'll end up very similar to our addition there on the east side of the stadium or even the Kraft Group building, where we do have, you know, a couple of air handling units up on the roof, so yes. And that, and the roof in the center is bumped up by a couple of feet because that's where, like, the main team auditorium is, so that's stadium seating, so we needed to get the roof line up a little bit. And then the other bump out you see on the far plane left is just a stairwell access to the roof.
And how tall is the building, again?
Forty-five feet from the parking lot?
Yeah.
Thirty feet from the field?
Okay.
It's basically 15-foot floor plate, so it's...
Okay. Visualize that better, thank you.
Dan, I brought up a board, and it's, it's an older plan of the site, but that gives, like, showing where Cross Street is, I'm not sure if you want to...
Sure, yeah, thank you. Right. Not sure the best way to do this, that's right. Everybody can see that? Um, here.
I think it's more for, for their sake.
All right.
Oh, look, he's got his own vanna.
How about that?
Sorry, Woody, I had to do it.
Cross Street basically runs right through here, the Patriots Training Facility.
Revolution.
Thank you. Is right in this area. So that's the Revolution Training Center. Cross Street runs through here, Pineacre, back through here. North Street obviously comes down through here.
Foxborough Terminals, this is the old spooky wall.
And we're talking about right here, so...
Just about that far.
Just about that far. So I, I hope that puts it in perspective.
Maybe you can circulate it to folks that are here, just so they can get a closer look.
Woody, if you don't mind spending a minute and showing people, I would greatly appreciate that.
So again, for reference, the projects here, where you can see a little bit of light blue, that's an existing area, so that there's a white red tape.
Where's the access, where's your, where's the, come across Revolution Way?
The crossroad, that's what used to be called, Putnam Parkway.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's the only way.
Yeah, and that's what...
It helps to change the name every year.
Yeah. So if you were to turn up, you would see Putnam Parkway, that's the old Cross Street. Right?
No, that's not it, no. Uh, North Street.
Oh, that's North, I'm sorry. Yeah, right. You come to an intersection here, where there's a, there's a stadium loop road.
Yeah, yeah.
If you can cross that intersection and, uh, clear yourself, you'd be along the side.
Okay.
Step, it doesn't say.
Buried under the tree, yeah.
What is this?
Grand River, Pineacres, uh, like, Chellis.
Right.
We saw signs of surveying out here recently.
No, I saw, like, actually, I was walking the edge of our property, which is, so it's our house, and then we go behind it, two houses next to us, and I know.
I think it's worth showing.
You know, to a tree on our property, so whoever puts those up is really...
Can you, can you...
Share it this way.
And you're on the back, you're on the cross?
Yes.
This is very helpful.
Okay, yeah.
We didn't know if it...
I know, I thought, I, you know, I figured you were going to develop more near the Revolution.
I think that Lot Seven is you, and it goes...
Not my best way to comment, so, yeah. Thank you. So this, this is all in this thing, and the new is going in where you got it, right on top of what is a parking lot.
How high, how great is the roof thing?
If you come, if you're standing in the parking lot, it's 45 feet up. Because the field is, the current practice field is actually above the parking lot, if you're standing...
I love how you guys have deferred to Woody here. Holding court back there.
He can go on for a while.
Okay, pot calling the kettle. If you open that door, Peter, I had to walk through.
That's fine. I had it coming.
Would you mind, at this point in time, like, if there are actual questions, I think it would be good to...
Yeah, and we're happy to stay afterwards and answer any questions for you as well.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I just want to make sure that anybody who might be listening that has the same questions there answered.
Any further information you care to share?
Not at this time, but happy to answer any questions that the board might have for...
Do we have any questions from the board?
Nope.
No, I want to hear from the abutters.
If any of the abutters have any questions or concerns, if you'd like to come up to the microphone, give your name and address, and pick your piece.
Seems like everybody's cool.
Well, good. Good job, Woody.
Okay, so what do we have to, what's, what are we deciding?
To close the public hearing and then make a determination if you're comfortable in doing so.
We are.
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, we offered at the last session, and we've updated it, I think, and shared with you some potential conditions that you might find helpful. We prepared them specifically to address comments that we received from public safety, from planning, and just anticipating your expectations from past sessions in terms of having onsite meetings. So we're happy to walk through those and get any further suggestions that the board has, or you can, it's really your, your call on that.
Gabby, your reaction, and Catherine's?
Have you got a chance to review those?
Yeah, I think that the ones that were submitted to us are all great. They meet a lot of the questions and the concerns that we heard from department heads, so I think that they're, they're fine from where I sit. I know that we have the standard conditions. Gabby, were there any omissions of things that you would like to add in as conditions or no?
No, I, I think that, because it's a, yeah, it's a modification, I think that these are good.
And to be clear, that, that sheet reflects your proposed conditions?
This one?
I just want to be clear that that didn't come from staff?
Right.
No, that's right. We, we only offer them because we know it's typically helpful, particularly where there's been the pre-filing consultation. We, in particular, did not want the deputy chief and chief's comments ignored in any way. We're obligated to address some prior to issuance of a building permit.
So, clear something up. We had our debate last week, or two weeks ago, about this, the minor modification. Are we all in agreement that it's not a minor modification? I mean, I think that having the public hearing today means that, you know, it was determined that that was the approach to take, so that means that it's not considered a minor modification. I think that, I, I agree very much with Attorney Tan, that we need to address what criteria ought to be factored in as, as we proceed. There's a little bit too much on my plate right now to get to that, but hopefully, that's a project that we can start working together with the Kraft Group on early next year, trying to get, you know, just more of a checkbox that we can look to really quickly and make those, well, you all will make the determinations, but we can, you know, supply the information that you need. Well, and let's work with organizations in addition to the Kraft Group as well. Yeah, of course. I want to look at some precedents set in other communities where they have similar uses. I make a motion to close the public hearing. I'm just trying to find the thing so I can re... Modification to site plan approval request, Patriots Training Center, Foxborough Realty Associates LLC.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye. I don't know.
Do we need a motion to approve?
Then I would make a motion that the board approve this modification to the site plan with the proposed conditions attached. Any other standard conditions? plan with the proposed conditions attached, and any other standard conditions that the board would impose.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Catherine, we're ready to go.